For the candidate's opening statement, we ask them to address this question. Why are you running for Ward 10 city council seat? And what are your qualifications? Each candidate will have up to two minutes to respond. And it was determined by drawing numbers that the first candidate to speak is candidate Warsami. And then the order will rotate for that question and the rest of the questions throughout the evening. All right, I think we've heard enough from me. So now we will begin. Candidate Warsami, your opening statement, please.
First of all, I want to thank each and every single one of you for coming out tonight to be here with us. I want to thank the League Women Voters for hosting tonight event. I want to thank the voters of Ward 10, both in the studio and tuning in at home for participating in this local democracy. I want to thank my fellow candidates. City Council member Aisha Chugtai, Mr. Bruce for participating as well. I want to begin by asking the voters of Ward 10 two simple questions. First, when was the last time that our city council member Aisha Chugtai housed a town hall meeting in your neighborhood? Second, if you have reached out to the city council office, when was the last time she gave you a satisfactory response? Well, by the time you come up with the answer to those questions, we have already reached the conclusion that our city council member doesn't deserve a second term. Because of her incompetence and ability to serve the people of Ward 10, that is where, because our community deserves someone who will listen to them, who will pick up the phone when they call, who will answer their email and show up when they need. That's where I came in. My name is Nasri Warsami. I was born in Somali in the middle of civil war, but I was raised by two great parents who taught me how to respect the parents, teachers, elders, and authority. Most importantly, they taught me how to protect my neighbors. That's why I joined the law enforcement. That's why I joined the law enforcement and to serve the people of Ward 10. That's why I'm here tonight. And the safety and the security of Ward 10 people is the reason why I'm ready for the service.
Thank you. Candidate Datches.
Thank you, Nasri. Am I being heard? Okay, thank you, Nasri. My name is Bruce Datches. A lot of people, including my family and old friends, call me buzzy. I couldn't see myself running for office at any time a year ago or two. And I actually took up this task because my good friend and passed away, Chris Parsons, who ran against Aisha and some other candidates last time. His death was tragic at a young age. And I watched the filings as the tick tock down to the last couple of days. And my friends urged me to stop talking and to take action. So I decided to throw my hat in the ring. I've been in the Uptown area for 40 years. My business has been up here for that amount of time. I've lived in the neighborhood for eight years. And I have a wife and a stepdaughter and two grown children. My concerns in the neighborhood are for mostly public safety, return the vibrancy that Uptown had only a few years ago to its former, if you want to say glory, you can use whatever adjective you like. I'm concerned that we're going in the wrong direction. I'm also running because I want to be able to, I have ideas that I think we can work with the opioid crisis and the unhoused population and try to make a big dent in that in our city. So I appreciate everyone coming. And I hope that you'll listen carefully to our words and then make a good selection when you vote. And I hope you all will vote. Thank you.
Candidate Chugtai.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here and watching along. My name is Aisha Chugtai. My pronouns are she/her. I'm a renter in the Whittier neighborhood, a former labor union organizer, the eldest daughter to a Pakistani Muslim immigrant family. And for the last two years, I've had the honor of serving the 35,000 residents who call Ward 10 home as their council member. Following redistricting, Ward 10 now includes the Whittier, Lowry Hill East, South Uptown, East Bure Makaska, and East Isle, South of Lagoon communities. We know that Ward 10 is a community that fights for one another with abundance and creativity. We show up in solidarity for our neighbors who are struggling the most. We know that housing is a human right and that everyone deserves a safe, stable, and affordable place to call home. We know that a safe, we know that we deserve safety in our homes and neighborhoods we love and that a safe city is one where the appropriate responders show up when we need help. We know that our deteriorating climate requires bold solutions at the local level. We know that workers deserve dignity, respect, and the right to a union in the workplace. And we know that our commercial corridors deserve investment in local entrepreneurship in order to thrive. We know our unhoused neighbors deserve to be treated with compassion and with humanity. It has been my honor to advance our shared values on your behalf at City Hall. From leading the rent stabilization effort to end the effort to pass a tenant opportunity to purchase, to expanding the city's behavioral crisis response team, to tripling the city's investment in climate action, to passing a humane encampment response package only for it to be vetoed. I look forward to earning your support again and continuing to fight for our shared values at City Hall.
Thank you. And now, as we move into questions, I'll remind you that we have up to one and a half minutes to answer these questions. And the first question will go to candidate Chugtai. Safety is a very key issue for many of our neighborhoods and for the city as a whole. How will you create changes that will improve how safe and secure residents feel making Ward 10 home?
We all deserve to feel safe in our homes, in our neighborhoods, and in our workplaces. And right now, our public safety system is not delivering safety for all. It is not an equitable system that treats all people fairly. It's unacceptable that we have to wait as long as we do for someone to respond when we call 911, if we ever get a response at all. We need to build a public safety system that addresses people's needs and that is comprehensive and responsive. In my time at City Hall, I have fought for comprehensive public safety funding, securing $1.7 million in community safety initiatives around transit hubs. I worked to approve the consent decree with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights to make sure we have equitable and just and lawful policing. I approved an auto theft prevention program because so many people in our community are struggling with auto theft right now. We invested $5 million in expanding the behavioral crisis response team to make sure that a mental health responder shows up when we call 911 and are having a mental health crisis. We are, we've embedded a social worker in every precinct in MPD and are, have just invested $100,000 in needle cleanup services in our communities.
Thank you. Candidate Datches. And if at any point anyone needs a question re-read, please just ask.
Would you please re-read the question?
I will.
Thank you.
Safety is a very key issue for many of our neighborhoods and for the city as a whole. How will you create changes that will improve how safe and secure residents feel making Ward 10 home?
Well, in talking to my constituents or the people I hope to be my constituents in Ward 10, the biggest thing that comes out when we speak is safety. Women that live on Knox Avenue won't go up to Lake and Hennepin. Women who live in the neighborhoods won't walk to the grocery store. People are not going to businesses in the neighborhood, the ones that are left that haven't fled because of the amount of crime. The response for 911, yes, it's not good. We can call 911 and find that we're in line for four days or three days for a response. But you know what? I will never defund the police, which the incumbent has said multiple times that she's for that. I am not for that. I think we need a full police force. I think we need accountability for our police force. But I strongly believe that business will come back. People will return to Uptown and make it vibrant again if we have public safety. And listen, I think they should pick up all the needles that are around from the opioid crisis and unhoused population. But we can't even go to the store without feeling that we might be shot or otherwise. And that is a police situation. We will have other responders as well, but we must restore a full police force. Thank you.
Candidate Warsami.
I am the only candidate up here with a law enforcement background that wakes up early in the morning to go to law enforcement classes class. So I understand how public safety is important. I was born in civil war and I left my country and my family behind in the search of safety and security. So I understand how that important. I will reinvest our police force and hire the best and the most qualified officers, increase police patrol in higher crime area. And when our city, great city Minneapolis was burning and some of our elected officials were calling for us to defund the law enforcement and even apologize to them. As a security, as a community service officer, safety has always been my priority. And if elected, I pledge not to change my stance. We continue to support the police and make sure that people of Ward 10 feel safe and secure in their houses and streets. And now we know the situation is bad. But that's the reason why, I mean, there's race. That's why I decided to run for office, to make sure that we have someone that understands why public safety matters. And we will work with community members and to ensure that the businesses are back to Ward 10, especially Uptown. Now it feels like empty place because of a lack of safety. So we're going to increase safety.
The next question will go to candidate, first. Candidate Datches. The Department of Justice cited the Minneapolis Police Department off-duty police policy as a problem in their report. What changes, if any, would you propose to both the Minneapolis Police Buyback Program and the Minneapolis Police Department Off Duty Police Policy?
I didn't catch the word before off-duty police, buy?
The Minneapolis Police Buyback Program.
Oh, buyback. Thank you. I think off-duty police can be hired. I think that we have to make sure that our force is rested and available to perform their daily duties. I'm not sure why they wouldn't be able to work off-duty to keep our other businesses safe, feel that they need it in the neighborhood. Right now, our force is way underfunded and depleted. I'd like to see the police department, obviously, hire a full force. I think that they should have the ability at that time to work off-duty if they choose, as long as they're performing their daily tasks and we're not spending tons of money on overtime wages. I'm not familiar with the program that you talked about, the buyback, but I'm just going to guess that buying out some, I'm not familiar with it, so I can't really comment on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I don't know a lot about this program and I would like to do research on this. But if off-duty police, I think they can be, you know, given the opportunity to protect our community and serve our local businesses. I've seen a lot of them working down, targeting down on the Lake Street and some of them working in other local stores. And I think it's because of the public safety concerns that we have that causes us to have the off-duty police officers. So it is something that we can support. But I'd like to learn more about it and do my research on it.
Candidate Chugtai.
Thank you. So buyback is a program in which organizations and neighborhoods can, enter into a contract with the city of Minneapolis to purchase additional patrol hours in a defined geographic area. Historically, over the last few years especially, it's been used by like neighborhood organizations to purchase additional hours. The thing about buyback is, you know, officers essentially are doing overtime work and are still, their first priority is still responding to 911 calls. So neighborhoods that have entered into buyback contracts, it's a very costly thing that they end up doing. And then on top of that, they don't often see a change in the level of service in their neighborhood because it's still, 911 calls are still the priority. Our officers are really overworked right now and we need to prioritize investing in other solutions instead of continuing to overwork police officers. That leads to more mistakes. In terms of off-duty work, that is negotiated through the Police Federation contract. And I sit on an advisory group to the mayor to figure out the details of things we want to see change in the contract.
Thanks. The next question goes to candidate Warsami first. What is and is not working to reduce crime in our city? And what would you do differently?
Can you repeat the question, please?
What is and what is not working to reduce crime in our city? And what would you do differently?
You know, public safety is the bedrock of life. There's a lot of things really that need to be addressed. And right now, there is no, you know, health relationship between the community and the police officers. And that is because of what happened in 2020, because of our current leadership, because there is no communication between the law enforcement and the community. And that needs to change first so our officers can feel respected. Because it's a two-way street, respected. So we can bring the community together with the law enforcement to serve the people of Ward 10. And once we change that and bring the communication, better communication, trust, and cooperation between the law enforcement and the community, then that will help us, you know, reduce the, reduce the crime. Also, community policing, which we lack right now. We need our police officers get to know the community they serve and also familiar with their culture, acting as a liaison between the law enforcement and the community. So that is something we like, more community policing and a relationship between the law enforcement and the community as well.
Candidate Chugtai.
Crime is down in Minneapolis and we're headed in the right direction. But we have a long way to go to making sure that our community is safe for everybody and that people feel safe walking around their neighborhood and going to the places they love and being outside and being in community with one another. What isn't working right now is expecting our officers to do every single thing and to be every single thing. We expect our officers to be social workers and mental health providers and everything in between. We need, we need greater tools. I have and always will support safety beyond policing, just like the majority of Ward 10 residents. And I reject the premise that the only thing that keeps us safe is armed police officers. We have, the council has fully funded the Minneapolis Police Department and continues to. In fact, the Supreme Court agrees with us. And in order for us to expand public safety, we need to be investing in other alternative programs and unarmed responders, programs that have been incredibly successful, like the Behavioral Crisis Response Team started out as pilot programs and have taken away 911 calls from our officers so that they can then focus instead on responding to acts of violent crime that require an armed officer showing up.
Candidate Datches.
Thank you. First of all, I challenge that crime is down. I can personally say that in my office building, there were four police calls, 911 calls made that were never responded to. They're never reported, so they show crime down. We don't have the police officers to come to those calls, so they're never recorded as crimes. That should be clear. We've, our carjackings are up from 1,100 last year to 1,800 this year. So crime down, I don't think so. I will say this, I would like beat cops. I want people, I want police to engage in the neighborhood. I want them to knock on doors. I want them to meet their neighbors. I want neighbors to not be afraid of police at all. I believe that neighborhood involvement with the police as well as, you know, the council will make a big difference. We have a council right now that five of the members want to defund. There is not a question in my mind. You cannot have people come to work in the city of Minneapolis as police if they're not feeling welcome and not supported by the community. So that would be one of the major things that I would work on. I think that is pure folly to believe that you can hire police at the number five wage level when we're the most dangerous city and we need to pay police the top wage.
Thank you. We're moving on to the next question now. Thank you. And that will go to candidate Chugtai first. Pedestrians and bicyclists account for 42% of severe injuries and deaths in Minneapolis, yet account for only 19% of trips. Pedestrian and bicyclist deaths in Minneapolis are at historic highs. As a city council member, what would you do to address this public safety issue?
Thank you. Everyone in our community should be able to safely walk, bike, take transit, drive to get from place to place in our city. Right now, our infrastructure does not support and is not built to allow people to walk from place to place. And as a result, pedestrians make up such a large percentage of people who are in accidents with drivers and also die as a result of those accidents. Ward 10 is home to some of the largest density of streets that are dangerous for pedestrians, cyclists, and bus riders. That's why I have worked really hard to implement a new neighborhood traffic calming program in the city and increase investment in it. We've been able to complete about 45 projects just last year as a result of this funding and making sure that we are building our infrastructure, building our streets so that they are safer for everyone who's traveling. They're safe for people who live in our residential areas and want to be outside, want to have their kids play outside. This is really important work.
Candidate Datches.
I support high-density bus lanes and traffic calming. So one of the things that I'm not in favor of, even though I'm a biker and a lot of my friends are as well, you know, the amount of funds that are being spent on bike lanes for the small amount of people that travel on them. I think a part of the safety issue is we have like a Lindell Avenue, which has been used as a speedway until recently when the county put in a calming, I think it's, I'm not sure what they call the infrastructure, but it has slowed traffic on Lindell from the drag races that we had only a couple of years ago. I think we also have to have people be tagged bikers as well that break the law and don't follow traffic rules. I mean, we can't have people going 50 miles an hour in our neighborhoods. I'd like to see more roundabouts if they're, if they will work with the fire trucks. And I think that we can come to a solution that will accommodate most everyone. We're not going to accommodate everyone. We do want to have, obviously, no less pedestrian accidents and bike accidents. I'm just not sure that, for example, the cyclists, if they might follow the traffic laws, maybe there'd be less accidents. I'm not sure. But I would vote for and try to implement calming methods which would include roundabouts. Thank you.
Candidate Warsami.
I just want to go back a little bit, what, you know, the issue of public safety, the crime that has declined. You can talk to anybody that live in Ward 10 and they will tell you a lot of public safety concerns related to the carjacking, robbery, and a lot of violence and gang shootings. So we cannot say that, you know, things have changed. Still, we've got a long way to go. Public safety is something really, really needed our attention. We cannot support, right now, you know, a lot of business, small business owners are complaining about lack of enough public parking for their client because of those bike lanes and public transportation. So we got to make sure that we're not spending a lot of money on things that really don't help our community. And if you go back to right now, if you go to the Bryan Avenue, folks that live there will tell you how they're not okay with that. And you go to Lindell, you go to Hennepin. And so I'm not in favor of that. And we need to make sure that bike line or bike line infrastructure and a project like that receives our community support and also enhances safety first. If it doesn't, you know, enhance safety, we cannot support.
Thank you, candidates. Our next two questions will be on the topic of housing. And the first question will go to candidate Datches. Can you share with us your detailed plan on making housing both affordable and accessible for all? And would you support rent control?
I absolutely do not support rent control. I think that makes housing less available. People will not enter the housing market as developers or otherwise. I have personal experience in that. And I believe that rent control is a bad, bad plan. What I do like, and the state has just, I think, brought this into, up for legislation, is voucher system. I think there's going to be, I think there's a proposal in the legislature right now for a $1.6 billion funding for, that will help 220,000 Minnesota residents. Obviously, a lot of them will be in Minneapolis. The voucher system will be similar to what AFDC people or food stamps get. We will help them with their housing the same way that we help them with their grocery bills. I think that that is the best plan that we can initiate. It doesn't hurt the developers and the people who own apartments. It helps the people that are renting. And it's funded primarily by people that pay taxes in the state. And we have a giant surplus right now. The $1.6 billion seems, I think it's about 6% of the budget, would be, I think that's the best idea on the table right now. And I fully support that. And I think that it will help the affordable housing crisis disappear.
Candidate Warsami.
I do agree with Bruce that the issue of rent control is a bad idea. I don't support. I understand that everyone, I support that everyone deserves access to a safer, more affordable housing. And I will increase the development of new affordable housing unit. But rent control, I know it may sound pretty good to a lot of us, but it hinders economic growth. It discourages developers from building more affordable housing. It discourages much more needed maintenance and diminish property values. So it's not something that we can support. It has been tried in a different city. We know what it has done to those cities. So it's not working. It has never worked before. So if elected, I will make sure that we support the development of new housing and making sure that everyone has a roof over their head. making sure that everyone has a roof over their head, but all that will come down to public safety. So, I will make sure that we promote Ward 10 as an attractive location for investors, developers, leading to job opportunity and development. So, that is number one. And then, I'm not supporting rent control, but we'll try our best to attract developers into our ward to build more houses.
Candidate Chukti.
I believe that housing is a human right and that every person in our city deserves a safe, stable, affordable, and dignified place to live. In my time at City Hall just last year, we invested almost $17 million in the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is used to subsidize the creation of affordable housing. I worked with colleagues to ensure that youth are prioritized in the affordable housing units that are being created. I think we need to make a number of other reforms to the type of, to the type of affordable housing that we're subsidizing, like making sure the vast majority of our money is going towards building housing for those who need it the most, those earning, you know, 30% of area median income. We, last year, invested in fire suppression systems for Minneapolis' public housing high rises, and we need to continue to invest in making sure that our public housing is dignified and continues to be accessible for people in our community. I authored the city's rent stabilization ordinance, and I did that because the vast majority of Ward 10 residents support rent stabilization because it is one of the strongest tools to keep tenants in their homes. I have authored the city's Tenant Opportunity to Purchase policy, which we hope will pass in the coming year, and opened a 40-bed women's shelter in our ward as well.
I want to ask something, please.
Thank you. We need to move on to the next question. You may use your next time to respond if you'd like. The next question goes to Representative Candidate Chukti. How can the city of Minneapolis do a better job of addressing the persistent issue of homelessness? What would you, as a council member, do to work towards effective solutions?
The city's existing approach to homelessness is cruel, and it is not working. We need to bring compassion and treat people who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness with humanity and care. I passed a comprehensive package with common sense reforms to the city's homelessness and encampment approach, including things like making sure that shelter bed availability is there when an encampment is closed down, and that was ultimately vetoed by the mayor. I know that the city has invested millions of dollars, you know, nearly now $200,000 per unsheltered individual on just moving people around, playing whack-a-mole with people. That's not working for anybody. It's not working for people who are living in encampments. It's certainly not working for people who live in surrounding communities. We need to make sure that we approach our encampments by making sure that sanitation services and needle cleanup and hand washing stations and water access are available. We also, just a few weeks ago, you know, I worked with my colleagues to aside $1 million for a new Avivo Villages project in South Minneapolis to address the need for culturally specific and holistic shelter response, and we opened a new shelter on 2400 Stevens.
Candidate Datches.
This, hello, hello, are we working? Can you hear? Okay. I believe the housing crisis is primarily caused by the opioid thing, by the opioid crisis. I've visited multiple homeless encampments myself. I've spoken to many of the residents in those encampments. It is terribly sad to go down there. I have empathy for every one of them. Unfortunately, everyone I encountered was high, so some of the answers that I got were not acceptable to, I could not really make sense out of them. What I do, or what I would like to see is the Avivo Village Plan Incorporated in the city, but without access to drugs in Avivo Village. Avivo Village is a great plan. I'd like to see five of them built. I'd like to use the money that they're proposing, the city council's proposing, to shovel snow and build housing like Avivo Village, 500 units that would house the unhoused population. We would address their addiction first, get them clean, move them into housing that would not allow drugs, which Avivo Village does, and have some strict responsibility to the residents. I feel it's cool to the neighborhood. The livability for neighborhoods is going down. I do have empathy for the unhoused and the opioid addicted, but we need to also watch out for our neighbors who are dramatically impacted by this crisis.
Candidate Warsami.
I just want to say a few things about what our city council members said. Talked to every, talked to residents of Ward 10. I'm a renter, and I've been a renter. Their number-one priority at this time is public safety, so that's not something that we can ignore. I agree with Bruce that the people that are on that street, homeless people on the street, really need help, and as a society, we should be offering them help. This is a city-wide, statewide, and county issue, and it needs all of us to do something about it. The Somali community, who are low-income families, live right next to these encampments, and more concerned about the public safety crisis caused by needleists, garbage, trash, violence, human trafficking, and prostitutes. These families who are hard workers to everything in their power to make sure they provide their family are driven out of the city by these encampments. I don't believe that addressing homelessness through a makeshift camp is a sustainable solution. I need, we need to, a multifaceted approach that focuses on driving stability and supporting housing to homeless individuals, addressing root causes of their situation. I believe in, we need to provide these people access to maintain health, support, addiction treatment, and job training to help them reintegrate into society. Can I finish?
Thank you. Everyone's actually doing really very well, sticking to the times. Congratulations so far. The next questions are in the category of neighborhood support and welfare, and candidate Warsami will be the first to respond on the next question. As a city council member, how will you prioritize and respond to constituent feedback, concerns, and requests in a timely way? This includes email, phone calls, letters, and in-person communications. And by the way, this was asked by many constituents.
Hi, candidate, will be the question, please.
As a city council member, how will you prioritize and respond to constituent feedback, concerns, and requests in a timely way? This includes email, phone calls, letters, and in-person communications.
That's a good question. That's the reason why I'm up here, running for this office, because we lack of accountability and transparency. If you, I've talked to a lot of folks in Ward 10, and they tell you that they send a lot of emails to our city council office, they call, and they never get any message or call back. So, that is the reason why I'm running, and I will prioritize their priority, their need, because we don't want to send somebody to the city council who will not prioritize what the community needs. So, we want to send somebody who is not going to show up for paycheck, but also making sure that their adequate representation that they deserve, or one of the, they deserve, they say. One of the reasons I decided to run for this is because I saw we didn't have independent voice at the city hall. So, we need to make sure that we are working for the people. I'm not here just to, because I wanted the job. I just want to help my community, and that's why I chose to be, to join the law enforcement. I've been community organizer, community advocate, I've been showing up for my community without getting paid for, and if I get the opportunity to serve my community, I will do anything in my power to get back to them as soon as possible.
Candidate Chukti.
Ward 10 is a highly engaged and civically active community. We contact 311 and our council office more than any other ward in the entire city, and I am incredibly proud of that. Our office, over the last year, almost two years now, has overseen and managed and responded to thousands of constituent cases, emails, and phone calls. It is our priority always to get back to constituents with urgency and to make sure that complicated constituent cases, things like victims of gun violence who contact our office and have a hard time figuring out what happened to their police case, people who are on the verge of losing their home because of an error that got made, and they need, they don't speak fluent English, and they need help negotiating with their landlord and interfacing with their property management company. That's work our office does. And on top of that, we have also prioritized proactively engaging with our communities. Every other week, we meet with representatives from every neighborhood organization in Ward 10. We work to make sure that we hold proactive community engagement events on the issues that are complicated and really important to our community, like understanding what the consent decree with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights actually means and how it's going to impact us.
Candidate Datches.
First of all, cut me off. Number one, the constituent services are extremely important. I would have a ward office, so you would not have to go downtown to do your business or make complaints or do anything that's ward-related. My office will be at 2909 Bryant. You'd be able to come in anytime you want. Obviously, we'd like you to make an appointment first, but we will have an office there, so it's easy accessibility. I'm going to challenge Council Member Chukti on this one. You know, we have made multiple, over 50 calls at least documented to her office. We did get a call back finally after two months. When asked why, they're busy. Well, maybe we have more 911 calls and 311 calls in our ward because the ward is not operating well. We need to be able to do better. I personally paid a painter to paint over barriers that were graffiti-tagged, that we called on multiple times, that were a block and a half lawn, and they were ultimately removed after we painted them. Constituent services are critical. You must respond. I'm a business guy, I've been in business 40 years doing the same thing. We have a policy in our office, 24 hours, that's when we return a call. It may not be the answer you want when you call, but we will get back to you because that's what we need to do as a public servant, and that's what I expect out of my public servants, and that's what I will provide if elected.
Candidate Datches, you are first for the next question. As the businesses and properties along Lake Street and Hennepin struggle to survive, what are three things you would do, you would champion as a city council member to help this vital commercial corridor recover and thrive in the future?
Basically, I think the main corridor that has suffered the most, and I think will continue to suffer, is the Uptown Hennepin and Lake area. I do believe that Lynn Lake and Nicollet will join that suffering as soon as the policies for removal of all parking on those commercial corridors are in, are trying to be put in effect. The Uptown District and Hennepin Lake taxing district has special tax, I'm sorry, has special tax provisions. I would eliminate or lower taxes on all commercial property in the area. Right now, we have probably an 80% vacancy in that area. We need lower taxes to bring back the businesses. We need lower taxes to incentivize the businesses to come in, which is going to be extremely difficult without the public safety issue being solved. So, first thing I would do is lower the taxes, try to attract commercial tenants that would be able to recognize that this is an area that was vibrant and will return to its vibrancy if we can get the businesses back in there. I think people will return once again. It goes to public safety. We still need to have police and beat cops up there so people feel safe when they visit those businesses that hopefully will return when we lower the taxes.
Candidate Warsami.
Three things that I will prioritize, safety first, first, whatever we do, we have to make sure that we have a safety. Second, I agree with lower taxes. And enough parking space. You would not go to, if one of your friend or family call you and say, "We're going to have lunch tonight, or lunch today, or dinner tonight," and you go to a restaurant and it doesn't have a parking, you're not going to go back to that same restaurant anymore. So, but if it has enough parking spot, you're going to keep going back, and that's what we like right now. So, I will make sure that we have a safety for everybody that come into a ward, lower taxes, and enough parking space for clients and those small business owners.
Candidate Chukti.
Ward 10 is home to some of the city's largest and most profitable commercial corridors, and making sure that we're investing in local entrepreneurship of our commercial corridors is an important part of how we build resilience for the long haul in our community. I worked to secure, to invest $1 million in technical assistance programming for our commercial corridors so that small business owners could be able to stay in their storefronts, whether they're renting them or owning them themselves. We have invested millions of dollars in the city's Commercial Property Development Fund, which helps local entrepreneurs be able to purchase the storefront that they're in. That investment has been so critical in building local wealth in our community, and that investment is nowhere near enough. We actually need to find a dedicated source for this money so that it can continue to benefit places like Eat Street, and that is about to go through massive change with Kmart along with all of our other commercial corridors. We also need to be investing in public art and public space and make it so our commercial corridors are welcoming and a place where people can walk and sit and visit and patronize our local businesses and invest in better street lighting and other infrastructure.
Candidate Chukti, this is for you first. Construction has started on Hennepin Avenue. For the most part, businesses on the east side of Hennepin do not have available off-street parking. What can be done to provide convenient parking within a very short walk to each business?
This is exactly why we created the city's parking task force for the Hennepin Avenue reconstruction project. There are a lot of parking pressures in every commercial corridor, and Hennepin Avenue is no exception to that. We do know there's a lot of underutilized parking on and off of Hennepin Avenue, so there are a lot of parking lots that are not being fully utilized. Just several months ago, we started working with a, with an owner of a space who just bought her storefront and had realized they also bought 40 spaces of underground parking that they were not going to be using in their business, and so finding ways to creatively leverage that and the city playing the role of facilitating that. Instead of making it so individual business owners have to privately go out and figure out how to share parking, the city should be doing that work. But there's, and throughout the two years of construction that we're going to go through, it's going to be really important to make sure that we're investing in creative tools that continue to bring people to Hennepin Avenue, things that go beyond just signage, which is what the city historically does, and actually support businesses in staying in their storefronts, like, you know, helping figure out commercial rent and subsidizing property owners to do that.
Candidate Datches.
I've operated in this ward for 40 years. I'm not sure there's any place, except maybe my building on 29th and Bryant, that has more spaces, which is about 35. I've never seen them. I've never seen them. I'm not sure where underground parking is that has 40 spaces, but we are eliminating parking. When we eliminate parking, we eliminate people going to the businesses, period. Hennepin Corridor is, to me, a ridiculous idea. They're going to do it on Lindale, they're trying to attempt to do it on Lindale, and they're going to do it on Nicorette as well. It's going to kill every business on those corridors. We're not here to subsidize business as a city. We're here to provide people access to those businesses. That's what we do, that's how we enjoy our city. You're not going to get that. Every policy that's going to be put into effect for those major commercial corridors will be a negative to businesses. You think Uptown looks vacant now? Wait, you're going to see Hennepin Avenue disappear because no one can go there. No one's going to go buy flowers at the flower bar and walk three blocks in 85-degree heat with their flowers. They're not going to stop at World Street Kitchen to eat. Now, it's great, I walked there, I live a couple blocks away. But if you don't live close, you're not going to patronize the businesses. There's people that come in from all over to go to Uptown, no longer. Worsami made a comment earlier. You need parking to support the businesses. If we don't do that, the businesses will disappear. Our city will disappear as we know it.
Candidate Worsami.
We're going to go back to the same question. I said before, and I'm going to say it again. We're losing a lot of business because of those type of ideas that's not working anywhere. We don't want to spend a lot of money because this money, every project or every program that we invest in, that money comes from our taxpayers. And we don't want to spend that money on something that is not going to help us. Uptown used to be one of the best places, people come to eat, spending time with their families, and right now it feels like a desert. And it is because of what is going on in a ward. If you look at Lindale, you know, Hennepin, the other day I was trying to buy a coffee, one of the small coffee on Hennepin, and there was no parking. You know, the whole road were, you know, were narrowed down because of, you know, the bus has, the public transportation has a big road, a big space, and bicycle, and we don't have any place to park. So if I live in this ward and I'm complaining about that, think about the people that want to come to our ward. So they're not going to come to a place that's not really helping them, that doesn't have, you know, enough parking. So that's it.
Thank you. The next question goes to candidate Worsami first. And I've got a couple of questions on climate and environmental equity and action plans. These are the next two. Candidate Worsami. How will you make Minneapolis a carbon-neutral city by 2050 and prioritize diverse residents per our climate equity plan?
Can you repeat the question, please?
How will you make Minneapolis a carbon-neutral city by 2050 and prioritize diverse residents per our climate equity plan?
That is a very tough question. But I really, you know, I believe addressing environmental, you know, issue and promoting sustainability is very crucial for our city and our planet. And I will support green infrastructure and reducing greenhouse gas emission. And really, we want to encourage the public to take public transportation to fight against this pollution and promote environmental, you know, things. So that is something that I will really, I will support. Yeah, I will support the environment. I will make sure that, you know, public transportation and reduce that, you know, people that are using, driving a car and spend a lot of, and that will pollute our area.
Candidate Chugtai.
I voted for the climate equity plan, and it passed unanimously because, like the majority of Minneapolis residents, council members are aligned in the need for urgent action to address our rapidly deteriorating climate. Implementation of the climate equity plan to make sure that we are prioritizing people who experience the negative effects of climate change, which is our communities who live along highways, our communities that are majority black, brown, indigenous people of color, and immigrant. That's where, that's who we need to be, that's who we need to be investing in first to build resilience. And I, you know, I authored the ordinance to increase our franchise fees, and it also passed unanimously, raising $10 million next year for us to invest in climate action. That's going to cost, that's going to, that's going to be paid for disproportionately by large commercial and industrial users who make, who use the most amount of fossil fuels and also produce the most amount of greenhouse gas emissions. We're going to use that money to weatherize people's homes, starting in rental property, starting in, starting in our majority people of color communities and build a green workforce to actually make that work happen. I'm really proud to be a champion for this work.
Candidate Dachas.
I don't want to sound evil, but 2050, the climate change plan, look at. I drive electric cars, I believe in electric cars. I don't want more pollution. But the reality is, you know, we live in a city that is five months of winter. People are not going to drive bikes everywhere. That's about 2% of the population. There will be cars. Cars, I support electric charging stations on the streets that will allow electric cars to park and use them so that will help reduce the greenhouse effect. Climate equity, to me, when someone says weather strip, I owned apartment buildings for a long time. Weather stripping is a comfortable thing, it's easy to do. Does it save a bunch of energy? No, we need more solutions. Solutions are high-efficient boilers, how to retrofit buildings that were built in the 1900s into the decade that we're living in today. It's a pure folly to believe that you can weather strip, spend $10 million on weather stripping, and it's going to make a difference. Because I will tell you personally, I've done it, it doesn't work. You need to have other plans. I think our council does not have the work experience or the livable, livability experience that I have, that I can bring to the table. It just doesn't make sense to do that. I would like to reduce pollution. I want to reduce pollution by using our funds most effectively, and I don't think that's the way to do it. And I'd also finally would like high-speed or higher-speed bus transportation in certain corridors. That's how I would, you know, promote some of the savings, et cetera.
All right, this next question goes to candidate Dachas first. Ward 10 residents are more than 80% renters. Research shows that there are persistent barriers to accessing energy-efficient programs for these households, leaving renters with little ability to get cost and energy-saving improvements. What programs, policies, or tools would you expand or create as ways to reduce these barriers?
Once again, so when we talk about renters, we're talking about apartment building renters or house renters. They're dramatically different. Obviously, a house can be made more efficient than an apartment building. The apartment buildings have certain different requirements, and they require different types of insulation that would be used on the roof and versus a house that has, you know, an alternative to that. I think that everyone should be in a warm place and efficient place, but we have to take into consideration our housing stock is very old. So when we replace that housing stock, as we are hopefully doing, that will become more efficient. The older buildings are tough, and it's going to take a lot of money if you want to make those buildings efficient. We also have to educate the owners and the renters on how to do this. It's not, not every landlord knows all about energy efficiency and how to achieve it. And certainly, the renters are not familiar with that as well. So that would require education, and I think once that education is given, we would be able to initiate programs that would be beneficial and effective to accommodate the people that need it most.
Candidate Worsami.
I agree with Bruce. I am a renter, and I will, I believe in holding accountable abusive landlords. If they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing to help those people that live there, and then, you know, I think we need accountability and transparency in everything that we're doing. I will make sure that, you know, that if we can renovate those buildings, all the buildings will be something that we can consider. But we need to make sure the people that live in our, the people in our ward feel safe and have access to houses that can accommodate them and that feels good.
Candidate Chugtai.
This is exactly why the city needs to step up and why we are doing it. We created the Climate Legacy Initiative, which is what these increases to our franchise fee are funding. That's where this money is coming from. And one of its primary, one of its priorities is targeting our rental stock. The way that the city does that is we have the closest relationship to property owners. We know exactly who they are, we know exactly how to get ahold of them, and we work with them all of the time through, through the city. So working with our owners in being able to both give, give some resources, but also help leverage federal, state, and utility energy companies programs to bundle those resources together to be able to make the types of investments that we're talking about. And, you know, when we talk about weatherization in our rental stock, what we mean by that is both like insulation upgrades, but also proper windows and efficient heating and cooling systems. And that work does largely need to live with the city, and we need to make sure that we're not putting the responsibility entirely on property owners or entirely on renters for having to push their property owners to make those types of changes. We need to lead.
All right, we have time for one last question, and then we'll have our closing statements. And the last question will go to candidate Worsami first. It is, what do you think are the most important challenges faced by Ward 10 and why? And what would you do to address those challenges?
Public safety, public safety. There is no, if you talk to anybody, you know, that lives in Ward 10, they would tell you what is the number one priority. What is their number one priority, they would tell you. That is safety, safety, you know. You can tell if something is so bad when the minority people, I've talked to a lot of people, especially the Somali community, they told me, if a Somali person tells you like, hey, are you going to do something about the safety? Then that tells you how bad that thing is. So safety is number one. And I will reinvest in the police force, as I said before, increase police patrol in hot-spot areas, and, and community policing. That is something that we, that I will do something about, encourage law enforcement to build a relation with the community and put in place surveillance cameras to catch, to help us catch and prosecute those perpetrators that harm in our community. So safety, safety number one.
Candidate Chugtai.
Ward 10 is over 80% renter community. We are one of the youngest communities in the city. We are made up in large part by frontline workers, people who are dependent on walking, biking, and taking public transit to get from place to place. That's who we are. And the things that we are struggling with right now and what we hear about more than, more than ever, or what we continue to hear about is housing, access to safe and affordable and dignified housing. And, you know, as a person who has struggled with housing insecurity throughout my life, I am committed to making sure that we are expanding, we are protecting our renters and expanding options for affordability. Our community is struggling deeply right now with the impact of homelessness and addressing that in a humane way and bringing together partners at the state, at the county, in nonprofits and service providers. That's what we need to be doing right now, and that's what I have a track record of. We need to invest in holistic public safety beyond just policing and investing in programs that help make our communities feel safer and make sure that appropriate responders are showing up when we need help. We need to urgently address our climate crisis as well.
Candidate Dachas.
I also want safe and affordable housing for the Ward 10 residents, but I also want them to be able to leave their house because they feel safe to go to the businesses that I hope will return. And so public safety is critical. The major component of that for me is police. I do appreciate and want other forms of intervention when needed. But having said that, people don't want to go out. They don't want to spend money, and they don't interact with our business community. We will not have a business community if we don't take care of the public safety. I want to restore the business, but I also want to help, as I mentioned earlier, the livability, the livability for our neighbors, our homeowners. Renters tend to be transient. Homeowners have, a lot of my ward or where I live and around me, they've been there 25 or 30 years. They've seen a dramatic drop in services from their councilperson and safety. I would like to address that. But the main thing is, we need public safety. That's number one, that will help restore business. I still want to help with the opioid crisis, which I believe fuels the unhoused population. It's critical for livability in the city, and it's critical for livability in our ward.
All right, candidates, you will now have up to one minute for your closing statement. We'll start with candidate Dachas.
You know, a minute and a half is a very short period of time, and obviously, a minute is even shorter. So I appreciate everybody coming out. I welcome any calls or comments that you may have as ward residents or concerned people in Minneapolis. So my phone is always on, my office is open. I think my ideas are good. I think I represent a major alternative to our current councilperson, who I respect. I just disagree with almost everything she does. And that's not a joke, that's just, we differ. But I think I can do a better job, and I think I can restore a lot of things to Uptown that people live here for and have moved here for. And that's where my platform stands.
Candidate Worsami.
Thank you for being here. My name is Nestor Worsami. I'm your public safety candidate who will not abandon you as the current city council member. I will prioritize safety, security, and unity. I will support our local businesses and promote Ward 10 as an attractive location for investors, developers, project, leading the job opportunity for our residents. I'm your bridge candidate who will bring our community together, not only that, but also I'm your change candidate, and I will be visible everywhere in Ward 10. I'm not a career politician. If I were, I would have waited for party endorsements. I'm the people person, and I want to serve the people of Ward 10 to the best of my knowledge. Please go out there, rank me as your first choice. If not, even put me a second choice, I will not going to disappoint you. Thank you so much for being here, and please, you know, that's what I'm ready for, and I want to help my community.
Candidate Chugtai. It has been my honor to serve our community for the last two years at City Hall and advance our shared priorities. I have worked collaboratively with every council member to advance policies and initiatives that are important to our community and worked across levels of government and brought our residents along in the process of that. I am proud to be the DFL and labor-endorsed candidate in this race, having built the largest coalition of this race with organizations across interests and sectors and membership supporting us. um, and um, membership supporting us. Um, Election Day is on Tuesday, November seventh, the early voting is open now. You can go to the Early Vote Center at nine-eighty East Hennepin um, and save yourself uh, time in line on Election Day. Um, and I hope I will earn your support and your trust to serve us for another two years.
On behalf of all the cosponsors, I thank the candidates for Ward 10 City Council for being part of... It's not easy to run for office. We hope the forum has helped voters to make an informed decision. Many thanks to MCN6 for recording this forum and to the Abyssinian Cultural Center for providing space. The video recording of this forum will be available in English and Somali, unedited, for viewing on the League of Women Voters Minneapolis website, L V W, LWVMPLS.org later this week. Recordings may not be edited by the candidates or the public or used for partisan purposes. The League also researches issues important to our members and the health of our communities. If you are interested in finding out more about what we do and how you can make a difference, please visit our website, LWVMinneapolis.org and consider joining us as a member or volunteer. You can find more nonpartisan information about candidates and about voting at another League website, Information on voting and registering to vote can also be found on the Minnesota Secretary of State website, MNvotes.gov. Remember, Election Day is Tuesday, November seventh. As mentioned, early voting began September twenty-second and continues through November sixth. Please vote, your voice really matters. Thank you, and now you can applaud again.